All right. Hi, everyone. Welcome to June 3, 2025 Willow's Planning Commission Meeting. At Willow City Hall. I call this meeting to order at 6:01. Uh, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic with its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, moving on to roll call.
Vice Chair Valencia.
President.
Commissioner Bra.
President.
Commissioner Corum.
Present.
Commissioner Ocampo.
Present.
Thank you.
Any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, moving on to public comment consent calendar forum. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are approved by one motion and vote unless commissioner, commission members of the city planner first request that a matter be moved for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the commission concerning consent calendar items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments for up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the chairman and commission members and not to staff and/or the audience. By state law, the commission is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation that you would like distributed to the commission, please mail it to the city planner at 201 North Lassen Street, Willow's, California, 95988, or email it to planning@cityofwillows.org. Close public comment at 6:03. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Um, moving on to, uh, the approval of the minutes. Um, can I get a motion?
I shall move.
I'll take it. Do I have to repeat the, it was?
I think all those in favor.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Uh, moving on to discussion and action calendar. All matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to address the commission concerning any of these items are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the chairman and commission and not to staff and/or the audience. When the chairman calls for public comment, please raise your hand to be acknowledged. While not required, the city requests that you please state your name clear clearly for the audio recording. By state law, the commission is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. We have any documentation that you would like distributed to the commission, please mail it to the city planner at 201 North Lassen Street, Willow's, California, 95988, or email it to planning@cityofwillows.org. Um, so item eight.
Uh, good evening. So we, today, we're going to be looking at reviewing sections of the Willow's Municipal Code with the main purpose of this being to prepare for the July 10 Joint Planning Commission City Council Meeting, where we'll be working with our contract planners, uh, who we've got online here, Delaney Garlic, to see what direction that the city council and planning commission want to take our Willow's Municipal Code on a broad level. Um, and then they're going to be bringing stuff back to us. So again, I've got Delaney Garlic here, uh, with us, our city contract planner. And for this, I'll be basically just going through the different sections of codes. I'll state something if I have it, and then you guys feel free to ask any questions or make any comments that you have regarding regarding that section of code. Um, one other little piece of business, we did have our commissioner Bobadilla resign, uh, just due to work schedule. Uh, so we'll be putting out new requests for applications tomorrow on Facebook. We'll get this guy sent to, we'll get this sent to you guys. If you know anybody interested, please send it to them. It's about a two-week turnaround on the application. Um, and hopefully we can get some good applicants and get that last spot filled. Um, so with that, I'll go ahead and and dive in here. So our first section is, all this is kind of related to zoning. Um, and I'm going to have Carleen pull up a, a city zoning map. What you guys have in front of you at the dais is the land use designation map. And so this comes out of our general plan, uh, which was just recently approved, I believe, 2022. Uh, so the land use designations are kind of a more broad definition. Um, and you can kind of think of the the zoning regulations as what we're looking at today with the code assigned to the the more, um, defined roles that these zones will play within these land use designations. So the goal is to have them match up pretty good, but we can narrow down different sections of the code and add the language piece to it within our Willow's Municipal Code. So it's kind of good timing to get this stuff all lined up with the overall hall of the Willow's Municipal Code. So our first, uh, piece that we're going to look at here is Highway Commercial District. And you'll notice on the zoning map here, this area is the the peach colored area. If I get up and move around for this, I can point it out. So, yep, so this area is going to be surrounding our I-5 interchanges, both down at Road 57 and down up at 162 on Humboldt Avenue, all that orange area. Uh, one thing you'll notice on the land use designation map is that the Road 57 piece is actually colored in as all mixed use. So that's something we want to examine that the, it's to the north of 57, the southern tip. On the zoning map, it's designated highway commercial, and on our land use map, it's designated a mixed use. So that's one thing we want to address and make sure that was actually intended to be that way, or if this was an error when the mapping got done on the general plan update. Um, to me, it seems pretty in line with highway commercial. Normally, that highway commercial is going to surround both sides of your interstate changes. Um, so on to the highway commercial portion, we've got permitted uses with motels, hotels, automobile service stations, restaurants, cafes, convenience stores, office space, and then the all encompassing, um, language here in the use permit that states all permitted uses set forth in Willow's Municipal Code 1860.020. So what that means is on the conditional use part of it is that every use that is allowed in general commercial and central commercial can also be done in highway commercial if you obtain a use permit for it. If that makes sense. And so our code does this quite often, and it may be something we want to clean up where it references back to other sections of code and lists within that section of code things that are allowed. Um, there may be a cleaner way to do that. Um, Delaney, I don't know if you have any comments on that with how much our code references other sections of code, if that's standard practice, or if that's something that's specific to Willow's.
Yeah, there's probably room to improve that, but overall that does tend to happen. So we can look at areas where it might make more sense to lay it out and explain it right there in that section and other areas where we want to reference other sections.
Perfect. Um, so yeah, basically for this, um, it's it's pretty limited on the permitted uses, but you are allowed to apply for a conditional use permit for everything that is allowable under general commercial and the central commercial zone. The last piece of it is the cannabis retail stores. This was one that was passed originally. This is not an updated zone. But I think the idea being, um, locating it off the freeway off of North Humboldt, or we actually had an applicant in the South Willow Zone that bought land in that highway commercial district that never followed through with it. Any questions on the highway commercial district? All right, we'll move on to, and if you guys have questions at any time, if something pops up, just feel free.
Uh, yeah, just to clarify, um, when you mentioned that that blue section there next to the, um, highway commercial over off of Road 57.
Yep.
Being mixed use, um, we could just switch that to highway commercial, right?
So, well, yeah, that process would require a general plan amendment. So it's it's actually very similar. The process is similar to what we did with the multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan, where we'd come through with an ordinance to amend the general plan, and then we would, we would change that piece of it. There's some other things that we'll discuss later on with the general plan to where we we might have some other edits to it. So I think getting through this whole process and seeing if there's other things to be changed, we can do that all through one ordinance and and modify those. But yes, it's absolutely possible. Okay, the next piece is the light industrial district. You can see with this, it's mainly hugs. 99, yeah, sorry about that. You just get it so you guys can see. Uh, so this is going to be this light blue shade for our light industrial district. And you can see we've got a piece of it down here. Uh, the blues kind of all run together, just we'll get to these other ones, but this is actually a public facilities blue. This is light industrial blue, and this is how this is heavy manufacturing piece of it. So we don't have a a lot of light industrial, but it does seem to be adequately spaced along areas that lend itself to that industry. Um, and permitted uses for light industrial, we see wholesale, storage and warehouse, feed stores, manufacturing, processing, all kinds of different things you would expect in light industrial. And then we also permit all the uses as defined in the general commercial. So that means that you can put anything that is in the general commercial permitted uses in a light industrial zone as well, and that would be without a conditional use permit. And then uses that require a conditional use permit for this would be, um, retail stores or businesses which are similar to those in 1860.030, and that is the general commercial conditional use permit allowed, the things allowed with a conditional use permit in general commercial. So basically, what that means is you can have all those things that are permitted uses that are specifically listed. In addition to that, you can pretty much do everything that's allowed in general commercial as well.
Okay, can I, can I repeat that?
Yeah.
Sorry. So you're saying anything that's light in light industrial, um, it also basically general commercial can be applied there with a conditional use permit?
So it would be if it require, if it's a pro, if it's allowed in light industrial, it's a permitted, it's a permitted use in general commercial is also a permitted use in light industrial. A, a use that would require a conditional use permit in general commercial would also require a conditional use permit if it was be put in light industrial. So they kind of mirror the, yeah, they they mirror themselves. So the only, the big difference is, is that you can do, basically, you can do everything you can in general commercial with a use permit or if it doesn't need one. But you can also do assembly and storage of goods, these other things that are listed as permitted uses. Mm-hmm, yeah. Lot size, yeah, you would have to meet the threshold of the larger of the two, absolutely. So just because the use is allowed there still means that you're going to be under the minimum areas, and that's under the other regulations piece of these, all these zoning codes. You can see what Lori's talking about where the minimum lot area is 10,000 square feet. I don't know the general commercial lot, but it may be a minimum of 5,000. So, yeah, so if you were going to do a general commercial piece, but it's on light industrial, you would still need to hit that 10,000 foot mark. Any other questions on light industrial? Okay, so then we go to the heavy industrial, which again is the kind of the heavier blue space that you can see, um, to the north of our wastewater treatment plant. And then again, on the east side of 99 to the north of the light industrial piece. It's on the eat this blue here. So in this district, the permitted uses are going to be everything you can do in the light manufacturing, light industrial district. So everything that we just named off. Um, and what that, what that does as well, again, allows you, since permitted uses in the light industrial district are also permitted uses, things that you can do in general commercial, you're now absorbing kind of two to three layers back on a code, and that's where it gets a little hard to understand, in my opinion, because you're, you're stating that, you know, everything that's allowed in light industrial is allowed in heavy industrial, which in light industrial allows general commercial as well. So you're kind of picking up by virtue of the daisy chain, um, a lot of different uses in that zone. Um, so this is mainly for wholesale lumber yards, kilns, concrete batch plants, uh, blacksmith shop. And then the conditional use permit.
Question.
Yeah.
I think I know the answer, but I I want to know. Under number seven there on that first page for heavy industrial, it mentions fuel yards. What is a fuel yard?
That is a definition I would probably have to look up to give you a a clear picture of, but I would assume, um, maybe something like a Gandy and Staley, uh, operation where large fuel storage tanks are located. Um, yeah, in my head, it pops up a fuel distribution type of yard versus a a fuel dispensing gas station.
I thought that was the answer, but I needed to make sure.
Yes, and I'm not 100% sure. Yeah. Of that. And that's a big part of the cleanup that we're going to be looking at too, is is making sure we have definitions for what these are on multiple different sections of code. Um, even the, I'm going to go back to highway commercial real quick, just because it's kind of got a funny definition. You know, for a gas station, we've got automobile service stations. Okay, well, that kind of, to me, lends itself to more mechanics and garages than than fuel sales. Uh, so our definitions are I think older, antiquated, and and not necessarily clear in a lot of spots. So that's going to be, as Delaney knows, we've talked about a lot, is clearing up those definitions. And if we say something that doesn't have a, you know, we need to have a definition of that in the code itself. Um, and we do have a good amount of definitions, but there's a lot of things, there's a lot to be desired, for sure. All right, any other questions on light industrial? All right, our next one is the open space district. Um, and this on the zoning map, I think the only piece that you're going to see is this green swath right here. And that's the located in the Basin Street development. And you'll notice on our, on the map that you have in front of you for the land use map, we have a a definition. I don't think we have a, an o, an open space. We do, we have a brown open space map. And that piece, again, lines up with the the Basin Street um, development. And what that's meant to be, I think that is actually a drainage system or collection basin that has to remain open um, and cannot be developed. So we give those definitions. If it wasn't a public park, say it was a private park in a development, that should probably, that would capture that land use designation. Um, but in this instance, I think the only piece that we have is that that Basin Street development for the open space. Uh, all the other parks, as you can see, are are that blue color that that notes that it's a government-owned park, public facility. So open spaces would be used for other other private parks and, in this case, detention basins. Any questions on that one? Okay, so we're going to, the agricultural, uh, combining districts and general district, I'm going to do these, I think, kind of in the same shot here. Um, I don't see any of these zones on either of our maps. Um, and so this may be something as we're looking at it, that we need to change or get rid of. The definitions lend themselves to um, agriculture, cultivation of food, tree crops, those kinds of things. And then the combining district is livestock and farming. And I think it's a kind of a contradiction to some of our other code in which we, you know, we don't allow a lot of animals within the city limits. Um, and the only, I believe, maybe the only agricultural residential piece that you'll see will be on our land use map. And that's because it's out in the county and it's off to the south of, uh, F, or sorry, to the east of FF, just to the south of 162. So the land use map also takes in surrounding county sphere of influence and gives them a designation. But we don't have anything designated either of these agricultural districts within our our city of Willow's. You. It could be, I think it would be, and Delaney, you might have a lot more information and better than me on this. But if an annexation occurred, it would most likely be for a develop, to develop that into some sort of residential or or another district. Um, you can see even where we do have, um, some some rice fields in our area, and that would be off of, uh, 53. We've got that on the land use, I believe, as a light industrial zone at this point. So I I tend to think of it as, and like I said, I'll let Delaney speak on this, as if if that was to be developed, what would it be developed as and what would it fit? Uh, but we definitely have these agricultural zones. I just don't see anything on that. You got anything to add on that, Delaney, as far as why we would have agricultural zones?
I would, I would echo what you're saying. Essentially, it's a holding zone for the existing ag that you have present, and then, um, when it does get annexed, we would either have the applicant or the city would work with the applicant on designating a land use in zone district.
Okay, and our next one here, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question. Uh, under principal permitted uses, uh, it says one single family residence, including a manufactured home. People are using, um, uh, storage containers now for homes. They remodel them. Should that be addressed or or not permitted?
Um, we've got specific code on storage containers, but not, uh, I think the style that we're talking about would be the barn dominium where you take storage containers and actually have them approved. If, in my eyes, if they're approved as a dwelling through the building code, then it would be, you know, up to the architectural review board, which would be you guys. Um, but it would be permitted, if it can be permitted as a dwelling through the building permit process. Definitely, I think you can get more, you can narrow it down and and have restrictions on those things. Um, but it may, that was probably more of a lawyer question as well on if we can restrict housing, if it can be permitted as a dwelling. I think we would, and Delaney, you can hop in on this too. We would, we would allow that as a form of a dwelling that would count as a single family residence.
Okay, can the planner address this to answer if it needs more, um, information or explanation?
Um, I would just agree with what Joe said, that it is up to the California building code on whether or not that storage container or whatever kind of unique building materials they want to per, you know, produce would meet the code. Now, if you would like something to be addressed in your zoning code that speaks to that, I think this is an opportunity to bring it up. So I don't know if that is a current issue the city is facing with, you know, um, storage containers being used as dwellings, or if it's something commonly you're seeing, but if, I would say if it's unique to Willow's and you would like to address it in the zoning code, there probably, probably are ways to go about doing that, and it may be through the design review process.
I'll leave that up staff. Lori, what do you think?
And I think, you know, physically, if it's something that we don't want to see in certain zones, we we make that, either you need a conditional use permit, as we don't want these things popping up everywhere, or it's only allowed in certain zones in residential.
Well, I just didn't want us to be shocked when it happens.
Absolutely. Yeah, it it, you know, it would, and that's kind of the 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 difference of it is could it be permitted? Yeah, I believe so, because we see them popping up. Do we want it, say, maybe we don't want it in residential professional, but we want it in R1 district, or we only want it in R1 districts that are north of 162, you know, something like that. But we can definitely, it's good to think about all the things, for sure.
And I have the same question when we get to it about accessory buildings. We, the governor has encouraged people to build an additional home on their property.
Yep.
Uh, a, um, storage container would be perfect. And and that's not listed when we get there. Um, it, it's going to happen at some point in time, I'm sure. Uh, it's just when.
Yes.
That's all I have there.
Mm-hmm.
I think you need a microphone.
Okay, any other questions on the agricultural zones or in general? Okay, this next zone, I'll be honest with, I I know nothing about, and I don't see it on even listed as a as a type of zone on here. So this is frontage combining district. Um, intended to provide special setback in design standards in order to ensure safe and uniform development within certain commercial areas of the city. And this states in any district which is combined, any F district, the regulations of this chapter cell apply in addition to those here and before specified for such district. So it's kind of a confusing statement to me. I don't know if this applies in combined districts, or to me, it sounds like it only applies to combined districts that are combined with an F district, in which we don't see any or have a definition for that. So this is, I think, something that really needs to get cleaned up. I don't know if you have that in front of you, Delaney, can, if you can make better heads or tails of it than I can.
Same, I would just say that's a cleanup item.
Any questions on the cleanup item that I don't have any information on?
On the temporary stands, uh, on the 4th of July, we have a lot of temporary stands. Are those something that a client has to get a permit on?
I believe that permit goes through the fire department.
Okay. Because in in number four, it says other than a temporary stand shall be permitted. How long can a temporary stand stay up? You know, I've gone up and down 99 and through the years, and I see a lot of temporary stands that are up year round.
Which which number is that?
Number four, under agricultural combining, under 1890, uh, point 20. It's a sale of agricultural products produced on the premises.
Well, I I mean to that, we don't, we don't currently have any zones that are designated that, so it that, it wouldn't apply okay, to it. Um, and again, I don't have the definitions, and I don't know if we have a definition of a, of what a temporary, the timeline consists of on that. Um, so yeah, I don't have an answer for that, but I can look into that for some other zones. I think Entryway may have some things like that.
Well, most of these, if they're a temporary, uh, stand, are probably going to be in the county.
Yeah, most, most of the time, we do get them in the, like you said, the fireworks booths, um, set up, but I'm sure there's a timeline designate or some sort of time designation for those. Or a construction standard that it's temporary and not in place. Okay, for the public facilities district, uh, again, this is, covers all of our government buildings. Um, you can see on here, it covers county buildings, city buildings, all kinds of different government buildings, our parks, um, Sycamore Park, the Willow's High School. So not just local city of Willow's government, but anything that's a government or semi-government piece would have that designation. One issue I do see on our zoning map and our general plan land use map is that the fire department doesn't have this designation. It is currently an R1, and I don't know if that's for any specific reason, or it's never just been updated. Um, so that's one thing that we'll be looking into, because that's, to me, definitely a public facility. And in this, you can see that the public facilities district accommodate a wide range of public institutional uses, which are established in response to health, safety, culture, welfare needs and citizens of the city, and assure compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. So we don't have a lot of a lot of, uh, clear definitions in the public facilities, and that's probably for for a reason that it gives us a little more, uh, leeway to put in the various different things that governments, agencies would be used for.
Joey, can I ask a question? So I'm just curious. So when the school did the barn and then the city council, if I remember correctly, offered them, you know, different land and all of that stuff. And then I heard that the school bypassed whatever the city council said from the state. So how do we actually, how how are they under us if the state can go over us? Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Um, and I I'm not super familiar with that process of what happened, but I, as I understand it, that's correct, and the state has a right to come in and basically approve it through their system and override the local jurisdiction. So if the state says that, no, this works- So if the state says that, no, this works for us, we're going to do this. Um, they usually have their own inspectors on occasion. They, they have, they have their own architects, there's state certified, you know, they've got a certain California stamp that, that, um, gives them the, the kind of overriding power that limits our, our jurisdiction's power. Um, so you can see that with courthouse projects, you can see that with, with different county-owned property, yep, all those kinds of things. Um, yeah, even with county-owned property, they'll, through, they can go through their building permit, they're encouraged to go through their building permit office, even though it's located within the city, because jurisdictionally, it's their building. Um, so those kinds of things do pop up. It is its own public facility, but we don't really call out anything in the public facility code, as you can see, that would really say you can't do this or that. It's pretty wide open. Um, and I don't think you'd want to limit that, because again, you've got everything from parks to fire stations to city hall to a library. So it's, it's meant to allow things that fit in with the surrounding neighborhood, because those government buildings could be all of a very numerous different types and functions. So as a long answer there, yeah, I think they just have the power to go in and say, thanks for your opinion, here's what we'll do.
Thanks for your laws or rules.
Yeah.
That's what we want to do.
Yep. And that would be to the lawyer, probably, on that one. Um, and I don't know how involved our city attorney was in that process, or, like I said, I wasn't here for that background, but it's, it's definitely an interesting question. From what I remember, it was looked at and there was no, was no way to intervene into that process, but it's definitely something that we can follow up with, and I think it's more on the city attorney side of that than the actual planning side of it. Delaney, do you have any experience with, with the state, a state project coming in and basically doing what they want within a local jurisdiction?
I've seen it happen. I don't really know when they pull that trigger or not, so it, it is kind of case by case.
And I believe that was a grant-funded project for them as well, using state funds, not that that adds any difference to it, but, um, when you're using that, that funding source would have to, you're always very careful when you're using state or federal funds to meet all the requirements and be within the law, because if you don't, then you're going to be paying that money back. Um, so my guess is, is they had had some, um, very good sense that they were in the right and could have the legal authority to, to do that. Any other questions on that? Okay, so the next one's going to be our planned development, combining districts. Uh, this is going to be the, the purple shades that you see on the map. Um, I think they match up pretty good to the land use and the zoning map. So this is going to be our Basin Street Industrial Development. Uh, this is going to be, uh, right outside of Swi- Swift, and, uh, sorry, Swift is actually in this district, and the Chevron Station out there. And then you can see some more planned development to the west of I-5, north of 162. And I think that's pretty much it. And I believe this is a newer, a newer piece to it, actually 1991, which is kind of new. Um, the purpose of a combining district is provide a mean of guiding land development or redevelopment in areas of the city that are uniquely suited for a planned coordination of land uses, and to provide a greater flexibility in land use intensity and design because of accessibility, ownership patterns, and community objectives. So basically, what we see in the combining districts is we're going to have different, different definitions of combining districts. Scroll down real quick, Delaney. So the combining districts, so the purple here, we're going to see it's a combined district, uh, general, commercial, light, manufacturing, and then the planned development. We've also got some pink, which you'll see, I think, up by North Humble, this area right here. And that's going to be a combination of a general, commercial, and one other one, highway, commercial. Actually, it's just general, commercial, and planned development. Um, and so you've got the ability to use different zones that are called out within those mixed use. For example, the purple zone was a combination of the light industrial and general, commercial, and then planned development. Um, and these are areas, the requirement, you must, you know, go through a zoning map and secure approval by use permit of the planning commission. So if somebody's going to build something in those developments, they're always going to be coming to you to get that regardless of use permit, or there's going to be something outlined, like the Basin Street Industrial Complex, or the housing that could go into that mixed use, or different things like that. We've currently got a project that hasn't, doesn't have an application submitted, but will be in South Willows. And they're going to be looking to combine some zones that are planned development with highway, commercial in this area. Um, and so Delaney's kind of currently navigating that situation, looking at combining multiple parcels down, down in this area. Um, so we're, we're kind of in the throes of that, uh, figuring out how that works with the combination of those uses. Any questions on planned development?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, you have the information on number five about the underground utilities. Um, one of the things that I have seen through the years is a, uh, Landscape and Lighting Act for any new, uh, construction in a planned development. Should that be addressed in this document? Because commissions and city councils often are not aware of that, or they forget to do it. If it's written down, I feel more comfortable that it's going to happen. Of course, uh, a Landscape and Lighting Act saves the city money in the long run.
A great, great, great question, Commissioner Corum. Uh, we currently do have a lighting and landscape assessment district for three different zones, one being the Birch Street Village, kind of off of Donny Lane over there. And then we have one for the, uh, Basin Street Properties. But Delaney, can you, do you have any insight on that, if it's normally identified in a combining district, well, the planned development?
Yeah. That is definitely an option to have it listed and, um, explained in the code. Um, if you have a separate document, you could always reference to that, but yeah, if you want your landscape and lighting to be like a provision of the code, um, this would be a great opportunity to add that.
Yeah, great question. And we do, we're going to be coming June 24th for, I think, our final assessment district. So we do have a separate, and the engineer prepares the lighting and landscape assessment district plan, um, each year. So that might be something we could reference within the code itself, or, or put concrete language in there to make sure that they're, and a lighting and landscape assessment district, basically what that does is it's a, it's put on the, the property tax, and it's given to the city to maintain a fund. And what we do is we, it either pays for their streetlights, or it pays for the landscaping, uh, right-of-way, different things like that. Currently over at Birch Street Village, um, we're working on redoing all their landscaping, because it's kind of gone bad over the years. And so we use those funds for, for various different things, but it's paid to the city, and we either contract out work to be done on those parcels to keep it, keep it clean.
The other, uh, important item is the, uh, potential residents don't get to vote on it, because they're not there yet. The, the buildings haven't been built. So if you do it up front, then, uh, the city doesn't have to pay for any kind of streetlights, or any kind of landscaping that may go in. So it saves the city money in the long haul, and they do a annual, um, I just lost the word.
Assessment, or?
Well, assessment, but it's done through a, um, gosh, an engineer, I guess I'll say. So they don't overpay. But there's probably a minimum requirement that has to stay in that fund, but it's not going to accumulate a lot of money.
You, I absolutely correct. I'm not the best at lighting and landscape, but I'm sure, I think there's a cap that says, if you hit this, you're not collecting any funds from them. You need to spend this down. It's not meant to be the, the bank account that the city holds on to, and it can only be spent, it's kind of like water and sewer, like Prop 218. You only spending money that you collected in that district within that district. You don't spend it anywhere else. Um, an easy example for that is we've got a District B, which is just Walmart lighting. So when Walmart came in, we did a lighting, landscape district. There's, actually, there's one funny piece of maintenance I found on there. It's the center strip, which is a bunch of tiles that, uh, we, we have to maintain those. But every year, it just pays for their streetlights. That's, that's what it does. Um, so they can be as simple as that, or they can be complex landscape agreements. Um, out of base, the Basin Street property, on top of just general landscaping, we also keep and mow the, um, the drainage system, basically a big ditch out there, and we're responsible for maintaining that. Things that you don't want, that need to be done for the city's protection, that are easier done by us and maintained than the private developer maintaining it. Okay, any other questions before we kind of hop out of the, the zoning piece of this? Okay, on to the, on to the real fun stuff. Comprehensive sign law. Comprehensive is a, is a very key word here. Um, this is a, this is a lot of information for signs. Yes, a lot of information for signs. Delaney, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and pass this to you. This, this goes through prohibited signs, exempt signs. Basically, it's got a chart of, depending on what your land use is, um, the allowed sign types. Um, so it's very, very detailed. And Delaney, I just want to see, is, do you have experience with other sign laws, and is this kind of par for the course? Is it, you know, up to everybody's discretion, or is it?
You know, unfortunately, I do, but I would say a lot of jurisdictions do overcomplicate their sign ordinances. So, uh, I wouldn't say you're unique in that. Um, the sort, sign ordinances can oftentimes get in the weeds. Um, if there's something, you know, you're, you're seeing certain kinds of signs in the city where it's causing clutter, or you're seeing, you know, things like billboards, we can definitely address that with the new, um, zoning code update. But I would want to hear from, you know, those in Willows, like what, you know, is there issues with the current sign, other than it being very complex? Are you seeing real life things on the ground that are, um, you know, causing, you know, a need for change?
So, and all, you know, the signs being complicated, one example is the, the flag signs that you see around town. Um, you know, we, we don't allow those here. There's been talk of, you know, maybe we allow, maybe even just certain zones to have them, but they come down at night, so they're not getting shredded, torn apart. I've seen in other cities, one where I live, that they're completely tore up, or they fly out during a windstorm or overnight. Um, so those kinds of things, and then we've got temporary signs, and as I was going through to get my, uh, pre-meeting Burger King, you know, they've got temporary signs out in their lawn, you know, that are advertising food. Do we, what's the regulation on that? And, you know, if we're not allowing temporary signs for some businesses, it, it needs to apply to all those businesses. So it's, and it's always a, it's always a battle on having a, you know, something very restrictive and something that, you know, but it maybe meets what we want, versus our enforcement capability of that as well. Um, so on this, I'm not going to dive too deep into it, but I think it's definitely something that can, needs a lot of revision. Um, I'm going to trust our planners to probably do a lot of that revision, but if you see things in here, um, that just seem really cumbersome, or just ideas that you have on, do we really need to come to a conditional use permit to you guys for some of the signs that are listed? That's kind of the other piece, is can this be streamlined? There is a process for administrative review, um, but I think.
Before you move on from signs.
Pretty merry, yep.
I don't have a problem with, uh, the flags. I don't know how other commissioners feel. For one, and I agree with what you said, uh, that they should be up only during business hours, and then be removed. Uh, for me, it helps to know that a business is open, first of all, and it does help them advertise a little bit, um, their business. If you allow some flags, um, you know, people in the downtown area, uh, may want to use some flags, and to do that, they may have to drill a hole in the concrete sidewalk to be able to get them to stand up. I don't know. I, I don't have a problem with them. It's, I'd like to hear from other commissioners.
I, I like them.
You like them?
Yeah, I've never had an issue with them, but I do agree, it, how you said, um, it's nice when they're out during business hours, so you know that they're open.
I have the same way. As long as they're advertising, hey, we're here, and then when they're leaving, put them away. I mean, I don't see a problem with that.
I think that is a problem, though. People don't make them down. So I think, and we, it seems as though we don't have somebody who can enforce that they are taken down at night. That's what we've heard in the past, that people can't enforce it, and so then they're up all the time. And also, some of them look nicer than others, and by that, I'm not talking about what I like, I'm talking about the shape. So I guess those are my concerns.
And I understand, to me, it should be a commercially made flag, not something someone builds in their garage. Um, so it does look nice.
And it should be replaced when it doesn't.
Yes, I agree.
But I think it's the enforcement piece for me. I think if we're going to have rules, then we need to make sure that we can enforce them, otherwise why have the rules? So if we're going to say they need to come down at night, we need to make sure that they come down at night. Yeah, so I think that's why I get hung up.
Would, could that come under a permitted use?
It was, like, meaning they need a conditional use permit to have them, or? Because currently, they're under a prohibited.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm asking. If, if you don't prohibit them, where are you, are you going to put it under, it's a permitted use with qualifications that?
Yep, we could do, you know, that the sign come down in between business hours at a certain time, that it be kept in a, uh, some sort of threshold condition, you know, in good working order, uh, not torn, things of that, we can describe that within this chapter, absolutely.
You know what, I think's interesting is that I think they, um, take away from the beauty of some of the buildings. I don't think the signs are really attractive, you know? It's just this.
All in the eye of the beholder.
Yeah, I know. I, I totally understand that. But I mean, I just, I don't know, I see it as a distraction.
But that, and this, you know, those are good things, as we can, as we have these conversations at our meetings and our follow-ups, is we can work these details out and, and see what we want to do. But I would definitely, you know, take a look at this, um, and we'll have, at our July 10th meeting, they'll be taking, you know, direction on kind of where to go with this, so we can revisit. Um, but it is, there's a lot of different rules for a lot of different land use designations in here as well. And it's, gets a little, gets a little complicated. And most of these are going to require a building permit, so they'll go through our building permit process. But there's, there's a lot of rules and regulations to this, so it's.
We also have no billboards, and yet we have billboards up the A-frame sign.
The aprit, the, the ones that are on the sidewalk, Commissioner?
Yeah.
So we do allow for the sandwich board A-frame. That's under, yeah, correct. So those are, those are allowed as long as they don't block a, a pathway. And they're under a certain, trying to find it, under a certain, um, yeah, they've got to be certain.
I feel the same way about those. They should come down when the business is closed.
Now, maybe something we can put in generally, that any temporary sign, or any temporary flag, or any, any and all temporary things to come in at the close of business or a certain time. Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, we do have an administrative review piece to this, which I do like, so not everything has to come to the planning commission. When we deal with larger signs, though, we're always going to be included in the design review process at a minimum for those. Um, like you say the dirty word, like Jack in the Box and those kinds of things. They will be designed, reviewed, approved, not administratively. Any other questions on the extremely comprehensive sign law?
When a, an applicant comes in, uh, and they want a sign, they obviously bring a set of blueprints or plans. Do they also have to give information on where it will be located on their property?
Yes, yeah, so we, we're going to basically make sure it meets all of these. Yes. Yeah. So we, we're going to basically make sure it meets all of these requirements. It's going to be different just on the building permit side of it. If it's ground mounted versus if it's hanging, um, all those kinds of things. So when we have them come in, we, we have them basically do the dimensions, where it's going to sit and all of that, and have them draw that out. And then we can compare it to the, the planning piece of it. And then, uh, 99% of the time, they're going to need a permit and they're going to go through a, a kind of a little mini plan check review with our inspector, but they, they are shown.
The reason I asked that is, um, the gentleman that wants to turn his, uh, building into a home down here on, uh, Lassen. I have to pull out quite a ways in my car to see if anything is coming from the west. The sign needs to go to the west more so that there's more visibility. That's why I asked that question.
Yeah.
If you're in a truck, no problem. Or even if, of, of all wheel drive vehicle, but if you're in a regular car, I don't know what it'd be like if you were in a sub compact. I can't either. I wish it was taken down, uh, while that whole thing is being.
Figured out.
Figured out.
And Commissioner Coram, I'll say this too. I just recently had a coworker that said they almost got hit because of, you know, that sign. So we do have, there's in another part of the code, I don't believe it's in the sign law. It may be, but there's certain setbacks for corners that if you're within this, it's for fences as well, that they need to drop to four feet. So we can look at, you know, where that's placed. Um, and if we can get some sort of resolution to that, um, he may be within.
Yeah. I just assumed it followed all the regulations, but, um, you still can't see around.
No, absolutely. I, yeah.
Aren't there rules that, it seems like there would be rules that have to be safe when you're traveling? And if you can't see around something.
There's setbacks. So we in our Willow's municipal code, and I can't speak to the vehicle code and the, it is 162 there. So they may have different rules for their right of way. But basically what we say is if you're on a corner a lot, there's certain requirements that you need to be out of, I think it's 25 feet back and, and you need to drop it to four feet, something to that effect. Does it, is it always a perfect solution? When you meet that requirement? No. I, I, my road at City of Orleans, I've got a, a brick wall on my intersection. And when you pull up to it, yes, it drops down, but you're still pulling out way into the intersection to be able to see a car in that, that piece of.
That can be put in place so that it's
We may want.
Within reason.
Yeah. And that's something we can look at.
But if we can't see, then it has to.
Yeah. I would suggest a, a clear vision triangle language be added either to the sign ordinance or elsewhere in the code for other structures that could potentially, you know, block drivers line of sight. So clear vision triangles will help, uh, and that would, you know, triangulate where a car would be versus where the incoming traffic is. And let you know how far back that wall or hedge or sign has to be.
And we could probably, so where I see it is in our specified drawings on the engineer's side. When somebody wants to build a fence, that's normally where I mentally see this come up. Uh, but I guarantee you there's a Caltrans spec that we can pull for, for these kinds of signs and, and, you know, they're going to be probably a safe, but like Delaney said, we can definitely look into that and see if, uh, what we have is adequate. And if not, look at other, other agencies and what they've adopted.
In the case that we're talking about, does that sign also have to be approved by Caltrans?
I do not know the answer to that. Uh, I would assume that it would. I think anything that's on that right of way.
Their ordinances would supersede ours, I would assume.
It would depend on if he's in their right of way. I, I think would be the, the main piece of it, if Caltrans were to get involved. Yeah. And we, yep. It would be, you know, like it's interesting to pull the Caltrans spec on their triangular field of vision and see kind of where our current signs are and if they meet that. Because Caltrans can enforce things on their right of way, which the intersection leading up to Wood Street is their right of way. Um, so it gets a little tricky on those kinds of things, but yep. And that's so we're looking at an 80 foot right of way, I think off of there from Lassen. I, 162 has its own set of special right of way rules, but we can, we can look into that. Um, and see, I know it's pretty far for Caltrans. I think it, it beats, but that's a pretty wide street as well. So I don't know what it is from center line. I know from Lassen, um, it's 40 feet from center line over to the building at that place, which has a, the non-conforming, has a variance for a setback requirement on that building as well.
Well, people want their sign to be seen and, um, I can't blame them for that. Uh, but that sign, if it were a little lower, wouldn't be a problem. I don't know if it meets the height requirement or if it goes over the height requirement, but, uh, if it meets it, it's still too high to see over it.
Yep. And that's the thing. We'll, we'll look into that and see what a good solution is to keep the line of sight. Maybe it's something specific to Wood Street that we can put in there as well. Anything else on the, the signs? And I, I believe there's a percentage in there as well. Yeah. Yep. The, and at somewhere there is, Lori, I'll have to look that up because there's meant to be, you can only have X percent of your windows covered. And that's for law enforcement or other people to be able to see in that window and see activity to it. Um, and that is something. We've addressed some of those signs before, um, with the store over on Tahima, um, north of Wood Street with him putting them on, you know, you're not supposed to put them on the trees or other people's properties or those kinds of things, but there is a window requirement for signage. And I, I want to say it's a percentage and I, I do know that we've had looked into that, but something we should probably have code enforcement go around and do some, some tap and talks to them. Any other questions on the signs?
A quick question. Sorry. When it comes to the enforcing, um, can businesses be fined after a certain number of, you know, visits or talks or?
Yes. Yep. So, um, I don't know if it, it should be listed. Non-conforming signs, the owner of non-conforming signs shall within six months of notification, remove it, obtain a new permit. Um, so basically we give them the, the chance to remove it or get it modified so that it works. Um, and then I thought it was listed, the enforcement was listed in here. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yep. Yeah. I would agree. I think a lot of them live in the nuisance section and they, for this, I, I was under the impression that we did have, a lot of them will have an enforcement piece, right? That'll be a section 18125190 will be the, the enforcement section, um, where we get into, you can be fined X amount of days. We'll give you this much time. So I think that's a, I think that's a very good idea that we either link back to those or even better have direct language in there because we can bark all day, but if there's no bite, then, you know, we can't make people do too much.
I like the idea of it being right there because, you know, they're looking through, you know, whatever question they have and then expand.
Yep, absolutely.
They don't got to dig any farther and take more time.
I agree. I think we've got too much linking throughout anyways. All right. Anything else on the signs? And as you'll see, there's other things in there about illumination and blinking signs and what's, what's not allowed. So, um, it's, it's got a lot to it. So that's a good one to, if you got a, a boring, uh, Monday night to check out. Okay. So the next one we'll be looking at is the administrative use permits. And this is a, a use permit that may be issued by the city manager or designee. Um, administrative use permit shall be filed with the city manager and shall be on a form provided. This basically goes through all of the, the process for an administrative use permit. And as mentioned earlier, administrative use permits can be given, um, in, in the chapter, we were just in the comprehensive sign law. So not everything has to come to the planning commission. If it can be approved in-house, we always have the option. If we think, yeah, this is, this is, we, you know, we don't want to make this call. We want to make sure that it's good on the planning commission. If it's really straightforward, we're able to administratively approve that, that use permit. So one example would be, um, we can approve the assigned permit as it comes through and not have to come to the necessarily, I don't say waste the time, but you know, come for something we know that is going to be good to go.
Uh, it, when you say just use permits, are you talking about conditional use permits?
I don't believe there are any conditional use permits that can be administratively approved. Um, I might be wrong on that. But things like the, um, the sign, sign permits, it, it will list it out within the chapter if that can be administratively approved or not, if that makes sense. So with, when you are looking through our municipal code, there'll be certain things that allow for administrative use permit, which would be just issued in-house and not require planning commission approval. I don't think zoning conditional use permits that I've seen are ever allowed to be administratively done at that level. They all require planning commission.
But basically you're just saying that anything that falls within the code, you don't have to bring it before, it's because it falls within the code.
If it's, if it's a permitted use, we would not take that to you because we don't, if it's a conditional use, we would. And then there's the administrative use permit. We're, we're still going to go through this administrative use permit process, but it'll all be handled in-house, but we have steps to it. Like say we deny a sign, somebody comes to us with a sign and the city manager says, no, that doesn't work. We still have an appeal process and a findings process and that. So that's what this chapter kind of outlines. If we're able to give an administrative use permit, this is how it's done. And here are the options, options for the applicant as far as appeal goes and all those kinds of things. So, and I believe it would be appealed to planning commission itself. Yeah. They can appeal to the planning commission or city council. So the city manager says, no, you can't do this. They still have those appeal options. So it's not just, hey, the, the city manager said, no, it's a done deal. It just kind of outlines the process of how we would approve those permits um, in-house if it's allowed and then the appeal process. Did I get that right, Delaney?
Sorry, I turned on my mute. Okay.
No, no, I was gonna say you're on mute.
Okay, good. Uh, um, yeah, exactly. So conditional use permit would be discretionary, would require the planning commission and public notice. Anything ministerial or admin level, like, uh, Joe is saying, we would review for standards and development standards in the code. But we're basically saying it's permitted, it's allowed in the zone district and it just needs to meet the specific use criteria. However, if it, if it goes beyond that, then it kind of go into a conditional use permit or run the appeal process and go through that as well. So.
I have a question for you. Under a conditional use permit, um, it usually goes with the property. Why is that so? It says conditional. So to me, if a property changes hands, that should, um, uh, do away with that permit until somebody else applies for a conditional use permit on that property.
Yeah. I'm not sure where, if that's state law where that kicks in, but yes, an entitlement is typically runs with the land. Um, the idea is that if it were to change properties, that a new owner could take over exactly as permitted. But if they wanted to change anything, they would have to come back and request that change. So a change of ownership alone shouldn't, uh, dictate a need to come back. It's when they want to change the conditions of that specific use. So the, the conditions, when we issue a conditional use permit with conditions of approval, that runs with the land in perpetuity until somebody comes in, requests a, a modification or requests a new use. I believe if the use seizes for, and I'll have to double check the code, for a certain amount of time, if that use is no longer active, it does go away after a certain amount of time. So if it's vacant or not being utilized for like at least a year, um, there may be provisions where that use goes away and they need to come back.
Are conditional use permits recorded in a deed?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because what I've seen living here for a long time is, uh, property does change hands. They don't even know that there is a conditional use permit. So they think they can go ahead and do what they want to.
Yeah. I've, I've seen that issue in many places. So I don't know that I have a good solution to that. Other than people, you know, looking to buy property should check with their local jurisdiction to see if there's any applicable business licenses, use permits. Anything that's not going to be, you know, necessarily recorded on their deed or title.
And so, cause it's not typically recorded, right? Delaney, that's not a typical piece to have those used. Cause one thing me and Lori talked about this very, very same issue, Commissioner Coram, and it's, uh, how we would be notified of a changing use would be through a business license. So when somebody applies, so say it's a, and we actually have had this happen, that the, the jujitsu place is going to move to Wood Street. Um, so the jujitsu place has a conditional use permit for their, um, place when they're at the, the Willow's Mall area there. And when they went to move to Wood Street, they then had to get another conditional use permit. And the way we're notified of that is when they change address on their, on their business license. Then we know, okay, well, we need to go through a planning review and it's not rock solid. And like we talked about it, it can lead a buyer into thinking they can do something when they, they can't. Or how do those conditions transfer to the new owner? And we make sure they're aware that, hey, you bought this property. Now you're going to be subject to all these conditions, even if it is the same type of business that's allowed. So those things, yeah, have been, it's a tough issue.
That's what I'm asking. Because it, excuse me, if it's not on a deed or if it's not covered by a title company, there's no way it can be known. The title company would be the ideal. Um, but I don't know how all that works. So that would be something the city would have to initiate with the title company?
We'd record it.
Yes.
And we do those with different things like EIRs and, and those kinds of, um, environmental documents on larger projects that are recorded and attached to it. So maybe that's something we could look into. Delaney is, um, once conditions of approval are executed and signed, that we have a, another step through the, uh, recorder's office and a, a recording filing fee associated with that. So it's attached to the property. That's something we can.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, sorry. I would just say you might want to check with county council on that. Um, the issue that I've seen in the past with other jurisdictions is recording conditions of approval is if that use goes away, then you have to file a release of restriction on the property and it can create a lien on the property. So you just want to be careful. You know, it, you would have to make sure that's maintained and updated as, you know, if, if the use goes away or if they come in and do a modification. So it can get lost in the weeds, but I hear what you're saying. I will say one of my most frequent callers and, and people are real estate agents that call and go, what's the history? the history on this property? What can they do here? What's been done? What are the conditions? So, you know, a lot of times it's kind of buyer beware, but do your research, reach out to your local jurisdiction to find out the history of the property. Um, but yeah, it can get missed. So I hear what you're saying.
All right. Um, yeah, so we'll, we'll look into that and see that, like I said, that'll be, or like you said, a good, make sure we have the lawyer's approval on that, see what kind of process, if any, and that seems reasonable and not overly burdensome. Um, so we, we're on use permits, correct? Which we kind of went over. So again, this is going to be the process for the use permits, uh, kind of lines out similar to the last piece that was on the administrative review. Um, states that applications shall be made, they shall be accompanied by the filing fees. They require a public hearing and it's, the public hearing is to be in front of the planning commission. Uh, we also have, this got brought up in discussion or, uh, earlier at our last training meeting where we talked about the, the amount of feet that the letters are sent out notifying people within the sphere of influence, basically of the conditional use permit, and that is 300 feet. And then it talks about the findings and Delaney went over this at the training as well. Um, the hearing officer may grant a use permit as the permit was applied for or in a modified form, if on the basis of the application, investigation and evidence submitted, the hearing officer makes the following findings. So the findings that the planning commission is going to look to make on every conditional use permit is that the use is consistent with the purposes of the district in which the site is located. That the proposed location of the use and the conditions under which it may be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. And that the proposed use is in conformance with the general plan. So when you guys are hearing a conditional use permit item, those are the three findings you're going to see in the resolution. And if you pass that conditional use permit, you are stating that all three of those conditions are met. You will, yeah, you, so if you're going to deny the permit, we would ask you to call out what, which one of those findings you're not able to make would be one of those three. Delaney, if you have anything else to add on that.
No, I think you said that well and, and to the point of if uh, the planning commission votes against the recommendation by staff, um, you will likely come back with revised findings to meet what the commission um, voted on. So uh, just yeah, note what finding you're, you're either making a case for or against so that we can kind of guide staff uh, to come back around with those revised findings.
Any que, any questions on the use permits? All right. Let me know if anything. So we're kind of in the general provisions and exceptions. So this gets into a bunch of, of different topics, kind of all, all lumped in together. Um, accessory buildings, accessory uses, bed and breakfast, fences, height exceptions, and that's probably where you're going to see some of that stuff I was talking about earlier with um, having to go down within a certain area of a corner lot. Temporary uses, kind of like we talked about earlier, non-conforming uses. Yard, storage containers, and we do have a large section on storage containers. I looked at it earlier. Um, and it contains a lot of information, but it's not referencing the storage can, container as, as we were talking about earlier as a, as a dwelling. It's referencing, this is a, a non-residential use storage container. So those provisions relate to it not being a dwelling. Second dwelling units, which is our ADU pieces, um, which allows a secondary residence to be built on the same parcel in an R1 district. So an R1 would be a, a single family residence. ADUs are now heavily utilized and, and seen as a good, good method to solve some of the housing crisis problems. So we do see them popping up more and more. Um, and again, that would be a second dwelling on a, on a single lot. Is there any, let me know if there's any specific pieces of this. Like I said, it's pretty broad ranging that you guys want to dive into. And I'll give you a sec to kind of get through it.
I'm assuming on your bed and breakfast, that after five guest bedrooms, it becomes a hotel or a motel, not a bed and breakfast.
I don't know the, Delaney, you might be able to speak on that better. I don't know where that threshold comes from and it's not cited. It does not seem.
Yeah, I would say typically that, that's kind of the threshold I've seen across jurisdictions. Um, and there's normally a definition or provision that a bed and breakfast would also require that there's a owner occupant or somebody running it that lives on site that kind of distinguishes it from a hotel motel. But typically, once you exceed that five bedroom and there's not somebody owner occupant running it, then it would be triggered as like a motel or hotel.
And that may be a place too, that we're, we're kind of currently working on something where it's a, an extended stay hotel where you've got residences that are, you know, more or a motel on a, on a 30 day, it's a 30 day or more. And so I don't know if we have them. I haven't looked into it too much, but having good definitions of hotel motel extended stay because it comes into play with occupancy, the transit occupancy tax and those, those kinds of things. So just, and I think Delaney, you kind of looked into some of that as well, but.
Yeah, I would recommend we define those a little more clearly in the code.
I like the section on yards. And I'm curious, um, how would one even enforce it? Like number eight, no yard may be used or allowed to be used for the storage, um, placement of junk, automobiles, all that kind of stuff.
So what?
A lot of that.
Yeah. And so we've got, we recently got a new um, building inspector code enforcement officer. And we're really trying to clean a lot of these things up. Um, he's um, actually in law enforcement still to this day. So when we rely on complaints and we try to get voluntary compliance out of them cleaning up nuisances, we have the ability to do fines is, would be the next step if they don't. Um, and then we have the ability to go abate the issue itself, say tow the car out of the front lawn or the RV. And then we would attach it to the, the property taxes of the residents if they don't pay. Just I'll bring up an example of, it's a little different, but at the, the building next to Crazy Taco there. So we have been trying for voluntary compliance on that for quite a while. We got it, but we still got a, a pile of bricks there. Um, the guy's currently stated that he'll have it cleaned up by the end of the month. Um, he's looking to get contractors. So we try to give them the opportunity to get through it as much as possible, but there's other cases where, where that just doesn't happen and we have to come in and abate the issue. Um, we worked through the landowners and the, the residents of it. Um, if it's a, if it's a rental situation, um, at the end of the day, the landowner is going to be responsible for it because it's going to go on their property taxes if, if a lien is assessed. But we also run into situations like we had at 143 Yolo where there was $70,000 worth of abatement measures done before it caught on fire. This just had to do with cleanup when there was stuff outside. Um, knowing that that property is probably not paying its property taxes and then we're out that $70,000. So there's all different kinds of scenarios. What we're really trying to do is up our code enforcement effort, get them out there, have them be knocking on doors, which he's been great about doing. He actually went out and did three of them. Um, just on Monday on complaints, we had a guy, you know, living in an RV in the back of an alley. People with parked cars on their lawns, those kinds of things. So we have very strict code and it is a lot for a person who comes through. He also is contracted through three other municipalities, but we're trying to really work on getting the nuisance sites picked up. Um, and some of them really fall into special legal circumstances as well that prevent us from moving quickly. So yeah, there's my long-winded answer on that. Sorry.
I think it would be a hard one to enforce. I, I'm not criticizing anyone. But if somebody has a neighbor or knows something, a place where it's bad, they just call the city?
Yeah. So we've got a complaint for him. So we're actually moving over exciting stuff coming up um, on a lot of different things. From our building permits to our business licenses to a new code enforcement module through our, our finance software Tyler. So that's all coming. And what that'll have is a user facing portal to it. To where you can create an account, go in, submit it. And then, you know, it's kind of put in a queue and the county's got a similar system. It's not a Tyler system, but you can go on and look at your code complaint that you submitted and see the status of it and where it's at. So we're not fully aware of the functionality or go live trainings in, in June for this, but we're really looking to make it easier. The current process is a code enforcement complaint form that'll come in, um, that you can fill out anonymous anonymously. Uh, more people will call and we'll fill it out for them if we have to, those kinds of things. So we get them through various, various ways, but we, we do operate on a complaint driven basis, which helps us. You know, if the, if the code enforced guy's out there and he sees it, he can deal with it. We, we really, it's, it's hard to be really proactive because then you can get into the, we're calling out somebody instead of other people, but we try to, we keep our eyes open when we're out and about and address the major, major issues if a complaint hasn't came, came in on it.
Sherry code enforcement is very difficult to do. In my neighborhood, there have been multiple people call the sheriff's apartment on a home. And so far, nothing has happened. This home is now up for sale and we're all praying that it will sell, so it will get cleaned up.
Yep. Yeah, we're dealing with the property on, on Baywood that is uh, really bad. Uh, but legality wise, the new owners have, have bought it, but the person is still living in the residence. So they have to go through the eviction procedures. Um, so they get, they get complicated when you get into those types of situations. Um, where we've, you know, you make progress and then something changes or everything kind of goes away or you've got a, a court now involved in it, um, that kind of prohibits that. We have had a little more success on our voluntary compliance. Like I said, Nick's been great as a code enforcement officer. He knows the routine. He's very comfortable talking to people and, and being proactive on that level. So it's, it's been good to have him on that, on a lot of different levels.
Well, one man's junk is another man's treasure. Isn't that what they say?
Well, that said, what's sad in this situation, uh, there is an empty swimming pool. And the neighbor, one neighbor has had to move across the hall into another bedroom because the frogs are so loud. It's, I mean, it, it's sad, but I also realize that people are not taught how to maintain things and to keep up their home. That's something you have to learn. Otherwise you just live in squalor. That's your norm.
Yeah. And unfortunately, sometimes what you see on the outside is the better look than you see on the inside because there's some bad cases that it's, yeah. I will agree with Commissioner Corum on that. Any other questions on the general provisions or exceptions? Like I said, I know it's a lot of different things. Okay. So we'll move into adult entertainment business regulations. So off the beginning you see, this is another thing about our, our code that it's kind of all over the place is.
Uh, sorry, um, I was looking at the, I was reading over the storage containers.
Yeah.
Um, so is, is there a specification of a storage container versus a shed? Like, like dimensions or size wise? Or I was trying to look for it, but I can't find that.
I do, I do not know. They've got maximum heights of a storage container listed at eight feet. Um, but I don't know. Again, I don't have the definite, the full page of definitions in front of me to see if they.
That's when we would revert to the definition.
Yeah, it would. And I don't know if it's there or if it's not there.
Like the larger one? Yeah. Okay. That. Uh, I just wanted to make sure.
If you build a storied shed, if you have it 120 square feet or less, you don't have to get a permit. But if it goes over 150, you have to have it permitted. And I would imagine most of these storage containers are over 120 square feet, even the small ones.
Yes, very true. But again, something we'll make sure we have definitions. You know, it's, it's good to have a, as defined as possible. And that kind of leads into where I was going on this next one too. So that's a perfect segue is you can see in this chapter, we've got definitions right at the front and some of these other chapters, we don't, you know, we don't have that. Even in the, the giant general provisions, we don't start with the definitions. So I'd like to see that kind of cleaned up as we've either got definitions listed within the chapters. Is it, is it in the major definition? Yeah. And what I mean by the major definition, there's a, there's a overall definitions page and then, but we see kind of broke out throughout sometimes very specific definitions within the chapter. So I think going one way or another, and I kind of like them placed within the chapter that they are used.
Yeah, just because it's right there and some, you know, for some people, it's too much going, looking here, looking there.
Absolutely.
Their faith, it's more clear.
And at least consistency, like whichever way it went, at least you would know. Oh, because if I'm seeing a definition on this chapter, but not on that one, I'm not going to assume that there's some other page. I'm going to assume that it should be in there and that there's probably not just the definitions page. So just, just again, back to cleanup.
I want to say one more thing about the storage containers too. We're talking about, you know, junk in yards and all of that. Why are we good with storage containers in yards when we're just collecting more junk to put in our storage containers?
That's a good question. And that's maybe something that.
They don't, they're not, I know, I don't like the size, but they're not pretty either.
They're definitely not pretty. Um, yeah. And that's, that's something that we may look at why, I mean, we've got a lot on storage containers, right? There's some pages in there. Um, do we want to allow them in residential zones? Do we want to just allow them in light industrial zones? Do we want to allow them in light industrial and then maybe general commercial with the use permit? Um, I agree with you. I wouldn't want a storage container looking at me over a fence in my backyard. Um, so yeah, that's, I mean, and I don't know how tight the requirements are, but it doesn't seem impossible to get one in your backyard as long as you beat the setback. So maybe that's something we want to totally do away with unless it's in more of a commercial industrial setting.
Could the size of a storage container be related to the square foot of the property or square feet of the property?
I, coverage. You would need, yeah.
Well, I was just thinking if there was a formula, most of the lots in town are 6,000 square feet. There's a few larger ones, but if there was a formula so that you couldn't have a 50 foot um, can, storage container in the backyard because it is uh, massive.
It's in the, in the R1 district, you see, it can't be within the setback. Um, which is pretty standard. You cannot, they do require a building permit and I, pretty much, um, you can't have more than one per lot. You would still need to meet your minimum lot coverages, right? So 60% of your lot, I believe in R1 would, you would not be able to allow to go over that percentage, but I do not see anything specific do this.
Well, I don't think we have any, do we? I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, I actually just got an email from the county today that they've got their contractor pick to at least go knock the weeds down over there. So yeah, we've got a storage container on that property. This was all, this was an illegal dwelling with a person living in a shack, I'll say. Yeah, garage. They've been working with her and hopefully we'll have that container moved off the property sooner than later. There's some legality stuff with that before that can happen, but yeah. That one's a. That one does, is not going to remain there. So then that, the reason that one wouldn't be, we don't have a lot coverage issue. Probably got a setback issue on the side, but you have to have a primary residence established on the property in order to have a storage container. That's one of the rules in there. So they do not meet that requirement and several others. Anything else on that? You guys feel free. If I move forward, we can hop back into it as well. Okay. So the next one again is the adult entertainment business regulations. And I feel like these are probably pretty, pretty outdated. They've got definitions in there that I'm not going to go through. And so the regulation on location. Adult businesses shall be allowed only in commercial zones. So if we look at our map, we see where those commercial zones are located are, that's a pretty broad range. Basically through our central commercial district, which is downtown. And then on the east and west side of 99, basically from almost city limit to city limit. And then the entryway district is also considered general commercial. They cannot be within 500 feet, varies zone for residential, thousand feet of another adult entertainment business. And can't be a thousand feet within a public or private school park, playground, public building, church, or non-commercial establishment. Operated by a bona fide religious organization. So with those kinds of regulations, it's probably pretty hard to cite an adult business entertainment venture. I don't, I've never seen one. Had one in Willows. But yeah, that may be something that we may. Not want to allow, or maybe pick a different zone where it is allowed than general commercial, because that kind of puts it in our, our downtown kind of area.
I guess I really didn't read this very well at home. But I didn't even know some of this stuff was legal in California. I thought you had to go to like Nevada for some of this.
And the, the, it's got, like I said, the definitions are interesting and I think it definitely needs to be updated and. Yeah, probably it looks like. Uh, that's why I said, I'm not going to go through the definition, but yes, it needs to be heavily reviewed and. It's, it's an interesting chapter and I think it's very out of date and probably would be a good one for just the. Be really simplified and probably a lot of it done away with, to be honest.
I think your definitions are very good.
Yeah, they are very, uh, very clear. Yeah, overly clear. Uh, but again, it is one of those things where it's only allowed in commercial zones, which. Is pretty much the heart of the downtown areas as well. So.
Yeah, I don't know how I feel about having something like this there.
Yeah. And that's, that's to be like Commissioner brought, brought up that some of the, the things that are defined and. Listed out. Are not legal. We'll have Delaney fix that one for us.
It's on my list.
Okay. Let me know if you've got any questions on that, but I don't think we'll be having too much. I don't know how, how far that one moves forward. And this, this is another one marijuana cultivation. So this is a piece of the overall kind of cannabis. We've got a, we've got a whole section dedicated to cannabis and dispensaries and actually goes through a little bit of the cultivation within city limits. Think basically it requires you to, even if you wanted to do your California legal. Indoor marijuana cultivation, you would still have to go to the city for a permit, I believe. And that's our process. We've never had a permit. So this chapter again is, is maybe something that needs to go away and just be in with the. Regular ordinance. Been basically this is stating that marijuana cultivation by any persons or entity is prohibited in all zone districts and in the city of Willows. So you can't grow marijuana within the city of Willows. And I don't think. That might be. And the other, yeah, and the other piece, and just my concern with it is, and I think this might be a legal review thing. Is I think California law allows you to be able to do it with certain criteria. And I think that's what we address within our other piece of the cannabis ordinance. And basically. I'll use Glen County for an example. So if you're going to do it in Glen County, you might have to be in a locker room. They've got all their county. Well, our process says you have to come to the city of Willows for a permit in order to do this, even within the city of Willows. And you're following all the state rules. So to me, it's, it's a pretty good safeguard on that happening. Obviously if somebody's doing it outdoors or it smells, hopefully the, the cops get called, but I just get worried that this, this maybe crosses over or contradicts. Our very detailed cannabis ordinance, which I believe is. Title eight or nine, but that's, that's my thoughts on it. So I, this may be something that goes away and just never got repealed when we adopted. There's a bunch of things that happened from 15, 16, 17, 2018. Where California came out and said, these local jurisdictions, you, you are going to adopt one way or another. Whether you're allowing this and it's no longer going to be on the state.
What was that house on? It was by here that one of the Victorians. What was it allowed to do? Do you know what I'm talking about?
No.
It was. Yes.
Is that the, is that a, well.
Didn't they have to go through the city though and everything?
Yeah, it's, yeah, that I've never seen one come through as a permitted, you know, you're going to, you're going to do this. Like I said, California's got their. Their standard, but they gave local jurisdictions the opportunity to put the kind of regulations that they wanted in place. Like in Tahama County, Glen County, you cannot grow marijuana outdoors whatsoever, right? Even if it's your six plants, personal use, it's. It's a, so I think the good safeguard that we came up with here is no, you're not just going to do it in your house. If it meets California law. You need to come to the, the city and get a permit. And that's kind of. Either. Nope. What it, what it would give us if this, somebody called the cops on them and they, you know, that we could. We could address that through our ordinances and our local piece of it. So it's better to have something like that than to not and just say, we're going to follow the state rules. It does give you a little. Extra bite to be able to find them, I guess, if they didn't come and get their permit to cultivate. Nine. Thank you. Okay, parking regulations. So this is another pretty in-depth chapter. It kind of goes through. All of the different parking spaces required. If it's a one family and two family dwelling. And I know we've had conversation about this and the requirement, something, something that's probably gonna. I don't say be a point of contention, but a point of discussion. We require if you build a one family or a two family dwelling duplex. That you have a two car garage for each dwelling unit containing more than one bedroom. And a one car garage for each dwelling unit containing one bedroom. So a two bedroom, one bath house would have to have a two. Car garage installed on it. And. The question I think of why, you know, is that a burden to, to people building houses? Is that? Is it working as a way to free up? Street parking? Is it used to collect clutter? And, and why, why do we have that? And is it something that we should continue to have? And Delaney, I don't know from your experience, if this is something that's usually pretty standard or all over the place or.
I mean, I think the general trend is a lot of cities and jurisdictions are reducing their parking. But you know, definitely depends on city of Willows and their needs.
Well, it prevents storage containers if we have them filled with garage.
Exactly.
Let's just go right back there.
Yeah. And maybe some middle ground is instead of calling it a garage, it could be a dedicated parking space on the property. Like a carport or some other form of parking. Driveways space. So there, there are some ways to kind of rethink that one.
Well, you can't convert a garage legally in Willows, can you? I know, because I was on the council when we did that. And part of that reason was those were the first ones to flood. That converted garages because they're on ground level. It is a difficult thing. And from my understanding, and you'd be more up to date on this than I am. A bank will not loan on a unpermitted garage conversion. Well, the other aspect, a unpermitted garage conversion. Isn't going to be taxed because the county doesn't know it. If you got a permit, then it has to go through and it will be taxed. The value will be taxed. And, and there's no way to stop it. I've seen homes like you're describing, the door's still there. Sometimes it's, the wall is five feet back, so the door can open. And then their lawn care things go in that space.
And one other issue I think we ran into, and I hope I'm going to repeat this correctly, but. If you're going to put in, if you're going to upgrade. I think above 50% of the value of the home. Now you're required, if you didn't have a garage, if your house was built before this, to add that garage onto it. And so you can take somebody who wants to fix up a, a house. But maybe can't afford to add that whole garage to it. It, it can be, we, I think I've had an instance of that since I've been here where somebody wanted to. So definitely something to think about and, you know, is it something that? Is working for us or is it something that is more cumbersome and a burden to home? Home builders, homeowners. Have a rush. Yep. It's whether we, we mandate it based off of bedrooms or not, or leave it to. The home builder. Other parts of the parking. Piece is we've got exemptions for the downtown central commercial district. And you'll see a, a figure 1812060. And so that's the existing use can. Sorry, businesses within this jurisdiction or anybody within this jurisdiction can make a case for. Not providing parking and using the on-street parking. And you'll see previously in the chapter, it goes into pretty specific definitions. And this will be on the, on the second page, the institutional uses. So hospitals, one parking space per bed plus one for every three employees and medical staff. And so we got very, very, very specific requirements. Which can be a good thing, but I think we'll definitely have the planners kind of go through and review and make sure that these are our best practices. Commercial uses where we've got a project that's very preliminary for North Valley Indian Health, where we're kind of discussing the parking requirements and what they. What they need. So we just want to make sure that these are. Adequate, fair and up to date and reasonable, that they're not, they're not also a hindrance to a business, but obviously we don't want. Our parking completely depleted in certain areas as well. But a lot of them are based on square footage. A floor area determines the parking.
Last question about parking. Can city. City parking, can it be restricted to people?
City parking as in a. Like said, our city hall lot here? Yeah. So we've got signs up for employee parking and then. No, no. I think I don't recall what, quite the sign says back there, but. Public facilities and parking, I think is a very. Touchy subject. And I don't, I don't know that we can really limit it at all without having a secure fenced area. Normally that's the way police departments and different organizations secure their yards is by fencing them in. Because if you remember all the fun. First amendment audits that get done, where people come in buildings and you know, it's a public space and it's publicly owned. I think there's some unclear legal. Pieces to that puzzle, which I won't be able to answer that, but. If it's for public use and it's open to the public, it's pretty hard to. Regulate. But I, yeah, I'm, I would have to go more legal on that because I don't know our exact authority on. Regulating parking for use only up the building or is it basically a public lot because it's open?
You could have permit stickers that you would give to your employees and the sign would say, no permit, you can be towed away.
I see that for private businesses, but when you pay tax dollars. Then I'm curious how you can oppose the law to.
You, if you, you know, if you secure it, depending on what it's for, as I understand it, like a lot of police departments do, but if it's open. Then it's open. It's like having an open lobby versus a closed off area. If it's open to the public. I don't think there's much we could do about it unless somebody's causing a disturbance, right? So if you wanted to come in. And sit in our lobby all day. I don't think we could have a reason to tell you not to. And that's just based off of YouTube and all the other fun stuff on those first amendment audits. But public facilities are. Definitely been put to the test on people's ability to be in them and videotape within them and all of those kinds of good things.
Why sometimes go to like libraries that's warm?
Absolutely. Yep. And like our library is a cooling center, you know, it's actually. Meant for that a lot of the time is they come, come in, charge your phone, hang out, you got a cool place to be. And unless you're causing a disturbance, I don't think there's really much issue with it that can be raised. So just, yeah, on the downtown parking district, maybe something to think about. Does it, does it? Is it big enough? Is it too big? Is it too small? Do we need to have more? Require more off-street parking in that area and just, just kind of how, how that works. Just something to check out. Said, I think you've got different levels at North Valley Indian Health. I'll bring it up again. It's a pretty busy, pretty busy area over there.
And hard to see when you cross the street there.
Very hard diagonal parking. It's very, you're pulling out of that place. It's. It's visually bad and it's a lot of people walking and moving. So, you know, just other good things to think about on that level of. So, you know, just other good things to think about on that level of. And do we want to consider other things besides square footage, you know, because. A small square footage with a lot of employees and a lot of pay, like things like that, where you've got employees plus people visiting doctor's office, dentist's office. Do we want to measure that some, some different way? Than we currently are? Anything else on parking at this? Time? Okay, so we'll move on to variances. So the, the general provision of a variance is when practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships, or results inconsistent with the purposes and intent. Of this title may result from the strict application of certain area, height, yard, and space requirements thereof. Delaney, I'll, I'll let you talk about variances. We've kind of just got applications and fees and all that, but. You probably have a better understanding of them than I do.
Yeah, I mean, we, as a planner, heavily kind of rely on making those findings for a recommendation on a variance application. Some places are a little more strict at enforcing those than others. If you're getting a lot of variance applications, that might be a good indication, there might be something wrong with your code. And that your setbacks are too stringent, or your heights are not, you know, allowing for certain kind of development, so. I would just note variances kind of help indicate, you know, what's going on? Are you seeing them in certain zone districts? Are we seeing them with certain land uses? And then from a planning perspective, we just want to ensure whatever we grant, if someone's requesting a variance, whatever we're granting them. Is not, you know, something that another property. Would be deprived, deprived of, so we really don't want to create a situation where we're granting one person this. Kind of request, and then if their neighbor came in and requested the same thing, it would be a no. So something to keep in mind is it is case by case, it is, you know, property by property. Typically, there is something to the property which would lend to the granting of a variance, it's like size, shape, topography. And something unique to the property that makes it, you know, not able to develop in a normal pattern as the similar. Properties in the district, but again, it's kind of case by case. I don't know if, Joe, you have more questions you want me to elaborate on, but I can.
Nope, I don't. Let's see if the commission has any questions. I haven't been around too long, I haven't seen too many variances. But yeah, that was a good. Good definition, and I'm gonna bring up five ten Wood Street again, but just on a different level, not their, their current variance request, which is a land use variance, but. So they had a setback. Issue and looking back on their, their file, I think the main reason was, is. They wanted to pervert, preserve as much parking space as possible, so they requested that their. Their setback, their side, I think their side setback from. Lassen Street be reduced to keep that parking space available, and that was granted to them. X amount of years ago through that file, so that's just the one example that I have of a, a variance being permitted. Okay, let me know if you guys have any questions on the variance or the process. Again, there's certain findings listed in there. That would be made upon approval. Our last piece we have tonight is the Architectural Board of Review, which is also you. We go through, and I do want to start off with. In my tenure here, we've been, we've been running, when we get a conditional use permit, kind of similar. Doing the, doing an architectural border review within the same meeting. And I think that adds a little bit of complication to the meeting, so we're really trying to, if we can, separate out the conditional use permit. Process from the Architectural Board of Review process. Sometimes it may make sense to do them at both, but on more complicated projects. We're gonna, we're gonna try to separate those out. So we've got matters subject to review, so all new buildings, structure, or other physical improvements, and any relocation. Or exterior extension or change of an existing building structure and other physical improvements. Shall be subject to design review, whether or not a building permit is required unless exempt from eighteen one four one oh four oh. So the, we get a definition of physical improvement within this chapter. And this is, this may include, but is not limited to. Siding and style of a single-family residence and duplexes when consisting of a subdivision of five or more. That does not mean individual houses, but as if it's a subdivision. Of five or more contiguous lots, that would be subject to review. Condominiums, townhouses, apartments, and other multifamily. Offices, commercial and industrial building. Religious, fraternal, social, cultural, and other buildings. So there's kind of your rundown of, of what, what new buildings would be subject to it. Then we'll see land improvements, which is grading of land, removal of natural ground cover, vegetation or trees. Installation of fences, retaining walls, walkways, sidewalks, curbs. So again, that's a pretty. Broad variety of things that would be subject to that. And that's, I think, what we needed to find, because if you're gonna take the literal interpretation of that as physical improvements means. Land improvements, which is the removal of ground cover, I don't think you guys want us coming here for somebody taking out their ground cover. So it's, you know. Landscaping improvements as part of a new construction that's commercial, you know, those kinds of things. It really is all encompassing. Parking loading areas, driveways, curbs, curb cuts, or other street connections, signs when submitted for improvements listed in subsection one. Which again, would be like the Jack in the Box sign, why it comes, it's a new building coming through, so design review is gonna occur with that new construction. Painting and colors, so this would come before you. If anybody basically painted a color outside of our. Pre-approved earth tone colors, and we've been very upfront with Delaney on the color situation, and they're. Gonna take a really good look at that and really come up with some best practices and some ideas on, on how to make this work a little better. Exterior lighting and drainage and all, all other exterior ornamental function, ornamental or functional changes, so there's kind of the catchall. At the end there. And I would say things, you know, exterior lighting. Some of these, like a drainage plan. It does get handled through the building permit process, that they're gonna have adequate drainage and they need to. Basically keep the same amount of drainage as they do if you expand something. So maybe that is something that doesn't need to be before the design review process, and it's just a condition that it'll be handled by the building division. Exterior lights may be something that I think might be important for you guys to see to make sure we're not blinding our neighbors out or doing those kinds of things. We do have some, some light requirements, but, or they want to put some really ugly square. Commercial looking lights in that nobody likes, and you guys can have a decision on that, but think about things. Is this really something that needs to come to me, and then maybe is this something that, like a drainage plan, are you really gonna care about? Some numbers on a paper showing slope? Maybe you do, maybe you don't, or is it better to just have that handled through the planning process? And then we look at matters exempt from review, and this would be single-family dwellings. So if you're built, just building a single house, you're not going, coming to us and having to go through this. Exterior painting, if the colors are approved from the earth tone colors. Anything that's not visible from outside the lot. Signs are exempt, except when. Submitted with the project. And we've kind of got work which determined by the building official to be minor or incidental with the intent and objectives of this chapter. So that's kind of just an interesting statement. And it kind of puts subjectivity in. How the building official would view different things, so that might be something you guys want to consider. Either putting a more clear definition on. Or. Not having it. And then it goes through all the required information. Which is, you know, some of it has to do with the review of it, others are the. Parking and loading circulation plan, things of that nature. And then we kind of get to, after that, this is gonna be. Related to the, the list of things that they provide. We've got a review shall be guided by, and this is kind of the instructions to the planning commission. Competent design, that it's been designed well, relationship between other development. And neighborhood and relationship between sites, materials and colors used. And then it gets into the earth tone colors and those kinds of different things. But it does kind of go through each individual piece of the architectural review. Like walls and fences, they'll be employed in a skillful manner, kind of gives. The, the code gives you guys a little direction on what you're actually reviewing and what threshold is, and I don't know if that's something. That needs to be spelled out, or you would prefer not to be, or could be modified, but. Like I said, it's quite lengthy. It is good that it's lengthy on the explanation of it, because I think it gives you. Things that you can look at, say that makes sense or doesn't. And then we get into the. Revoking expiration and extension of approval. And this is basically if they've been approved for design review, just states the time they have to do to get this done. We saw this with Jack in the Box, again, actually, I'm using them a lot. They, their design review expired and they had to come back before you, they extended twice, I believe, and then it expired and we brought it back before you to. Go through all of it again, and that design review was for the building and the sign, so if they don't make. Adequate progress within certain amounts of time. You guys can extend those, but it's usually one year periods, and then they do expire, they pay us the fee again, and then go through the process.
Any idea? If that's gonna actually happen?
Yeah, so we're getting, say we're. Since almost a joke, yeah, we're, I think we're getting really close, so we, we actually just had our. The guy with the sign permit, I think it's McHale Signs, reach out to us and. Wanting his permit issued at this point. Last time I checked in with them, they were, which was about three weeks ago. And I'm gonna send them a follow-up email. This week, they're working with Caltrans on their encroachment, so they're fully approved plans now. From the city, and that happened in. Fall of last year, and they were really wanting to start construction, a little before fall, in fall, and. But they hadn't got their Caltrans encroachment permits at that point, and. Me knowing the process of the Caltrans, I was like, oh, that's probably gonna take a little bit, and they submitted, got comments back, resubmitted. And that was the last I'd heard, so they're on their second submission to Caltrans. Once Caltrans approves. It'll basically, all of our plans and specs and plan checker approved on their civil and building plan, so. I would hope they were expecting to hear back, I think, at the end of May or early June. On if they need more revisions, hopefully they don't, but once they get through Caltrans, it sounds like they're. They're ready to go, so I haven't heard any news, even hearing that other Jack in the Boxes have closed. Throughout the state, and the minimum wage going up, they have moved forward and continued and not stopped on their, their process, so. Yeah, the, the Caltrans approval is the, the last piece of it, basically at this point.
The amount of time that it's taken for this to happen. Do you think that it's possible that other? Other businesses are looking at the length of time it's taking and not choosing to come here, or does that have any impact possibly?
They could be, what the, the issue with Jack in the Box is, is it went through about fourteen plan check reviews. So when we get plans and send it to Coastline Engineering, they're gonna review it and make comments. That happened fourteen different times. It's pretty unheard of for somebody not to get it right that many times. These are not new comments that come through, it's basically addressing the same comments. So. It's really no fault of the City of Willows that it took so long. Their architect and engineer were not able to get through the plan check process within. An adequate amount of time, it was just revision after revision. Normally, you're gonna see two, maybe three revisions on a plan check. A larger project, maybe a couple more, but. They were not able to. Correct their revisions, and you're talking probably, you know. Two to three to four weeks, and sometimes there'd be a gap in between them submitting the revisions, so we'd give their plans back, correct this, and then they would. Take a month or two to resubmit, so the plan check process was really the big holdup on this project. And that's just. The engineers can't approve stuff if it's not up to code, so, and if they, like I said, I've, I've not seen. A process go back and forth that many times, ever.
You would just think that somebody like Jack in the Box would know how to get it done.
How to, and it's. Yeah, absolutely. You know, we, we had recently, it came before you guys for some of the stuff, but it was the Walmart design review for the exterior improvements, well, there's plans submitted for a bunch of interior stuff. Decent amount of work, and you know, like I said, you usually always get one or two comments, that's gonna happen. But yeah, that's, you know, done and approved and. On its way already, so unfortunately, it was just, and I wasn't around for all of them, I think I came on right when we were finishing up the approvals. And we got two different approvals, we've got our civil, and then we've got our building, and I know both of them just had a, a ton of revisions, so. Sometimes that communication between the architect and the engineer on identifying those and really completing them, for whatever reason on this, just. Took, took a long time, unfortunately. Yes. Yep, and, and that, those. Those guidelines specifically downtown and one other set of guidelines, and I can't recall it. A reference in the general plan too, so, yeah, that, yeah, they did, so. Those are things that. Will also, I think, need to be. Reincorporated into the code if we're gonna follow what our general plan says. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, I've got a couple copies, so we can make those and hand them out, and that was the downtown design guidelines. Yep, and my residential, yep, and I think. The general plan, I know, references the Wood Street. Guidelines, but I'll have to see if I have a copy of that as well, but yeah, we can get that out. As long as, and I'll send out a link to the general plan too, it's available. Our website's not the best, it's a little difficult, but. We'll send out the, the general plan, so you can kind of comb through that, but it does, I did see that it did reference. Those design guidelines and that we should continue to adhere to those guidelines. And with, with the Wood Street conversation too, it's, it's, I know those design guidelines are. You're gonna put in businesses, but they're gonna have a residential feel to them, right? That's the, that's the deal is. Which, which it came up with the five-ten conversation, you know, and it's, but it specifically, those guidelines are meant to kind of blend. The older Victorians and not have this ultra-commercial feel to it. We want it to be commercial, but we want that soft touch of a residential look to it, so. You'll notice the new buildings that are built are all a residential look to it, so. At least those design guidelines were being incorporated throughout that process, and we definitely want to continue that if. We don't want to change it for the code and the general plan, which was just done, kind of wants to stick to those guidelines with it, so. I think those are all really good pieces to a puzzle. And a bigger plan. That we can get you guys. That's, that's what I have so far. Any other final comments? Questions? Tired of hearing me talk yet?
Thank you for doing all this.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you guys for being a part of it, and I think it's a very good proactive. Measure, and it's gonna help get us the best result on this municipal code. And thank you, Delaney, I don't know if you had any closing comments, or?
Appreciate everyone's comments made, it helps inform, you know, what we want to bring forward, and. Just to note for the July tenth, it's gonna be a little bit of some stuff we're already gonna recommend off the bat, and then also collecting. Like this feedback from both yourselves and the city council and any members of the public, so. We're really hoping to kind of get everything figured out on July tenth, and then come back, package it all up, and at least come back with. Something for y'all to, to digest, and then kind of go through a few more iterations to get that done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we were gonna shoot for one after the. I believe we were going to shoot for one after the July 10th meeting for public input. I believe I will double check that though. Think we wanted to get the high level, maybe do one more meeting after that and kind of nail it down. But I believe at some point, yeah, we were going to get the input. Once we had, once we had something kind of to, to show or, or a, a path forward that we would ask for that public input. But like Delaney said, you guys are like, thank you for participating. It's great to have your guys' input. Um, we've done this over, you know, there's a lot to digest and you're going to be ahead of the curve for this July 10th meeting and um, with the city council. And I think it'll be very productive because of that. So.
I liked that one slide. Well, I mean, I liked more than one of your slides, Delaney, but I liked that one slide where it showed just the two different visions of the same street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Visualize.
Yeah, because your, your code is going to kind of change and shape the look of your city. So we're really hoping to kind of understand the, the overall vision to that um y'all have for Willows and, and what you want to, you know, maintain as the existing character and what you want to see change. So yeah, we're excited to be a part of this.
Thank you. You can move on, right?
Yep.
Okay. So is uh item B, were they both basically the same thing?
Yes. Yep. We, we covered it all.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm just going to skip over that, right?
Yep.
Okay. Um, all right. So um, last but not least, comments and reports. Um, do we have any, does anybody have any comments or reports? Uh, staff, any comments or report?
Um, so coming up, like I said, we're going to be recruiting for a planning commissioner. Hope to have them on by the July first meeting. I believe it's July first. Um, some stuff coming up will be conditional use permits for you guys. And this will be involving retail cannabis dispensaries. So it'll be a big item. Uh, so we hope to have a, the fifth person on for that. I'm going to get you as much information as I possibly can, as far in advance as I possibly can. So you have enough time to research all this. Uh, we'll probably have our city attorney here on those, just to answer any questions. Um, and Delaney will be getting geared up for those. So that'll be the, that's about the only thing I think we have on for July at this point. That can always change, but we'll let you know if it does. So that's all I have.
Um, any suggestions as to what you think we could look into in the meantime? I mean, what state law maybe, or is that something that you guys will probably be doing for us?
Yeah, the, the state law requirement. So the conditional use permit will be looking at the, the specific zoning. And then those, those three findings that we went over in the conditional use permit piece will be what you're going to be making your recommendation on. So think about how the business meets those and, or doesn't meet those and what, what that's going to mean. So the three findings in the conditional use permit are what are going to be in the resolution for that piece of it. And other than that, I'm, I'll just have to get as much information as possible, Lori. Yeah. Yep. Yep. Mm-hmm. Yep. We're going to try, we're going to hold that separately. We want to really, so the, and I'll, I'll send you that link as well with the, the link to the um cannabis um, part of the municipal code. And you can check that out in the meantime because that's something you can definitely look at now. So just a, just a brief overview of the process. It's went through a phase one application, which was an internal review in the city manager's office with us. And then the ad hoc committee has been involved, phase two and phase one application as well. Um, Lori's a part of that ad hoc committee. And so now we'll be coming to the planning commission for the conditional use part, which is attached to their physical location of what they're doing. And then after that piece, they will go to city council and city council could approve both, approve one, or deny them all. So you're going to be, it's not the final decision at this piece of it. It'll be specific to the conditional use permit. Then if they're approved, we don't really want to go through anything until we know what city council is going to do. We'll come back for the design review piece of it at that point. So it'll be a conditional use permit, whatever happens at council. And then if somebody is approved, we'll come back with the design review portion of it. Well, you'll be able to put those conditions of approval on all, all of those. You can do that with the conditional use permit as well, but.
Okay. Now I'm confused a little bit. Sorry. So what is our, the very first thing we'll be deciding will be what and then?
The conditional use permit. So it'll be.
The council will.
Decide if they want to.
They agree with this?
No, it'll be, do they want, they, they can deny the application based on different things. So the final approval for them opening, you'll be looking at the conditional use permit, which is, will be a conditional use permit like every other conditional use permit. And you'll look at those findings. The last, they have to get that conditional use permit approved um to go before the council. And then the council is going to look at, do we want this here? Right? And they can, they can come up with their reasons for not allowing it or approving that based on that piece. So they'll be the final decision makers will be city council.
They want it, then it comes back to us where we decide what it's going to look like on the.
Or you can put restrictions and things like that on the design review process. Yes. So we'll examine all those things through the design review process. Their existing buildings. So that makes it a little, a little easier to look at because we're not going to be doing the grading and drainage and all that kind of stuff. But yeah, it'll be the design review will come back and that'll be the, the look of the building.
And that'll be more detailed than we've ever had before. And it'll be stuff that we can hold them accountable for.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yep. So yeah, it'll, yeah, conditional use permit, city council for approval or denial of the, of the license. And then back for design review.
From my perspective, I mean, when I came to the um meeting at city hall where they were talking about what they were going to use with the tax dollars.
Yep.
And I saw cannabis on their agenda. I mean, and I've also heard them speak. It seems pretty apparent that they seem to think this is a good deal for Willows. They've been very pro, I'm not speaking for the whole council.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying the majority seems to be pro.
For it.
For it. They've been pretty vocal about that. And I, and personally I was disappointed to see that when we're talking about the tax dollars, I wondered why, of all the things that we could talk about, why that was the only thing that was on there.
Yeah.
I thought that was kind of sad for Willows. There's, there's, whether or not it, it happens in Willows, there's so many other things that Willows could also be hoping and wanting besides that. My opinion.
Yeah, nope. That's what I, I've got for staff reports. And like I said, I'll get you that. I'll get you information. I'll make a priority to get you that's the municipal code, information on the cannabis regulation to you guys. And then um I've got, I'm going to get Delaney the, all the applications and she'll be building up the staff report for the conditional use portion of it. And well, I'll get, like I said, I'll get that out as early as possible to you. So if you have questions before the meeting, we can get those, those addressed. I know it's a, a, not the most normal topic to discuss, be discussing. It doesn't come around that often. So we want to give you guys those opportunities to review and, and ask those questions ahead of time.
Um, all right. Um, I'll go ahead and enter in the meeting at eight ninety.
Oh, yeah.
I love it.
That's part of the uh, that's in the general plan itself too.